The October 20th, 2020 meeting of the City Council is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderwoman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenczi.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is docket number 2020-034 for the property located at 3410 Remington. Petitioner is Thermo King Quad Cities, Inc. Present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief of variance of Sections 155.112, surfacing to allow construction of an open off-street parking and vehicle storage area of dustless rock without requiring a wearing surface of asphaltic concrete or comparable hard surface, Section 155.143. Plan of off-street parking or loading areas to proceed with constructing an open off-street parking and vehicle storage area or a building permit, Section 155.480. Landscape screening and lighting regulations to allow construction of a parking area without requiring a landscape plan, including but not limited to installation and maintenance of parking lot landscaping, screening, and lighting, and the points related thereto. For a period of two years to comply with the requirements of those sections, petitioner was granted a variance of Sections 155.112, 155.143, and 155.480 by ordinance 2018-036 for a period of 24 months, which ended August 2020. This petition is to extend that relief another 24 months. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is grant the variances for two years as requested in the petition. Chair will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the planning and zoning recommendations for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. With regards to discussion, I do have to make a motion to allow Alderwoman DeSensio to participate via phone. Is there a motion?
To move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So any discussion on the zoning request? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will now call the roll.
Let me just vote on the machine.
We'll run the machine.
The machine is.
Okay. I guess everybody present can vote per the machine, and then Alderwoman DeSensio will be called upon.
Alderwoman DeSensio, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2020-037 for the property located at 711 East Enos Avenue. Petitioner is Enos Park Development, LLC. Present zoning classification is R3B, general residence district, Section 155.018. Requested zoning relief reclassification to S1 Neighborhood Commercial and Office District, Section 155.030, and a conditional permitted use pursuant to Sections 155.030 C9. Taverns except for drive-in or drive-up windows for the sale of alcohol, and 155.200. Taverns, microbreweries, country clubs, and golf courses, clubhouses with liquor sales by the drink to allow a tavern, and a variance of Sections 155.200A2. Taverns to allow liquor sales by the drink within 100 feet of a residence, church, school, park, community facility, or daycare. And Sections 155.100, required accessory off-street parking spaces, eating and drinking establishments to allow zero accessory off-street parking spaces instead of the 20 required. And Section 155.480I1, landscape screening and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard requirement, and landscaping to allow a reduction of the required transitional buffer yard adjacent to the alley along the west property line from 10 feet to 0 feet to accommodate the placement of a waste container. And along the east property line, a reduction of the required transitional buffer yard from 10 feet to 0 feet. The adjacent lot on the east is a sculpture garden that is zoned residential but a wall and a landscape berm built in the common property line. And Section 155.480I3, landscape screening and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard requirement, and landscaping to allow a trash receptacle as permitted item and a required transitional buffer yard north property line. Petitioner intends to keep the 10-foot transitional buffer yard on the north property line with the exception of the location of a trash receptacle at the west end of the north property line. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the S1 zoning, the requested variances, and the requested conditional permitted use with the following conditions. Number one, the tavern is limited to the existing building, and an outside seating is limited to the approximately 800-square-foot exterior seating area shown on the site plan submitted with the petition. Number two, no amplified entertainment. Number three, hours of operation for the tavern shall not exceed the city liquor license. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
And Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the staff recommendation, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open, and Clerk Lesko will call on Alderwoman DeSensio.
Alderwoman DeSensio, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning passes nine voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2020-038 for the property located at 1925 Clear Lake Avenue. Petitioner is Trailers Direct of Springfield, LLC. Present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief of variance of Section 155.112, surfacing to permit an alternative surface of eight and a half feet, or is that eight and a half inches, or eight and a half?
Inches.
Eight and a half inches of roto millings instead of the solid dust-free surface required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. The chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. And the clerk will call on Alderwoman DeSensio.
Alderwoman DeSensio, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2020-039 for the property located at 2147 Shale. Petitioner is Kay Callis. Present zoning classification is R1 Single Family Residence, Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief reclassification to R4 Mobile Home and Trailer Park Residential District, Section 155.019, and a variance of Section 155.072A through I, special provisions for R4 Mobile Home and Trailer Park Residential District to allow one mobile home at the property complying with the R2 yard setback requirements. And Section 155.001, definitions, lot to allow two residential dwellings on a zoning lot of record to allow placement of the mobile home on the lot and upon occupancy demolition of the existing single-family residence within 120 days. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial of the requested R4 zoning and approval of a use variance to allow a mobile home. And a variance of Section 155.001, limited to 120 days to allow for the placement of the mobile home and demolition of the existing single-family residence, the requested variance of 155.072 is not needed. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call on Alderwoman DeSensio.
Alderwoman DeSensio, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning ordinance passes seven, or rather, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2020-041-HIST for the property located at 724 East Edward Street. Petitioner is Kelly Batley. Present zoning classification is H3 Historic Zoning District, Section 155.272. Requested zoning relief of conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.73H3 Historic Zoning District, conditional permitted uses to allow the existing restaurant the service of alcoholic beverages. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval with the following conditions. Number one, the restaurant with the service of alcohol is limited to the existing building footprint and/or the existing front porch or portico. Number two, any live entertainment is not amplified inside the restaurant or on the existing porch or portico. Number three, hours of operation shall not exceed the city liquor license. And number four, any proposed exterior renovations in conjunction with the proposed service of alcohol shall undergo review by the Historic Sites Commission per code. Historic Sites Commission recommendation is approval. Approve the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. The chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open, and Clerk Lesko will call on Alderwoman DeSensio.
Alderwoman DeSensio, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the zoning request passes with nine voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. This time, the chair will recognize Treasurer Misty Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of September had a beginning balance of $14,651,707. We took in total receipts of $18,8,811. We had total disbursements in the month of September of $19,723,704, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of September of $12,936,814. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
To move.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, we have Director McCarthy to give a presentation of city finances and the corporate fund.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I have a short report for you tonight. See if this will work.
Get the timer on him.
Now, the last few have been pretty good, I think, and this one's only like four slides, so we'll get through it pretty quick. So I do have some good news tonight. Things have continued to improve based on data that we've seen. We did receive the July sales tax numbers, and we saw that in the state sales tax, we're actually 1.4% over expected budget, 2.7% on city sales tax over expected budget for the month of July. Again, it's hard to tell if that's just pent-up demand from people who were indoors in March and April and May, or whether or not that's something that's sustainable. We'll know more as we continue to get more data, and specifically, we're pretty interested in the August sales tax that should come through at the beginning of November because that will be the second month of Phase Four. So it should give us a pretty decent idea of whether we're looking at something sustained or if it was just sort of a blip for the months of June and July. And as we get that information, we'll continue to refine. But at this point in time, based on the data that we have, there's a couple of things we've done. One, we've removed the C and D scenarios, which were the worst-case scenarios, and we're going to focus on more of A and B as things start to move closer and closer together. And based on the numbers that we have, the data that we have, we've run a couple of scenarios where it looks like now we're facing maybe a $4 to $5 million revenue shortfall versus budget, which is certainly great news for all of us. That's about half of what we had projected or expected way back in March when we didn't have any data. So we've certainly come a long way over the last six months or so, and we can be pretty happy about that. Now, the one caveat, I will say, is we had some internal discussion and a little disagreement on whether or not we should have a scenario C simply because there is concern. I have concern, and I know the mayor has concern because we talked about it today, about what we're looking at over the holiday season and the fourth quarter, which is one of our bigger months for obvious reasons for the corporate fund in terms of sales tax. There are a lot of economists out there that are concerned about a pretty significant downturn from prior years in the holiday season, especially at local retail establishments because of the pandemic. So that certainly could have an impact on us. So right now, what I'm kind of saying is we have 4 to 5 million on the sheet, but it could be more in the 4 to $6 million range if we were to see that scenario with a major downturn. But Scenario B is still a 3% decline hereon out versus budget, and because of that, I think that, you know, that 5 to $6 million range is still attainable, and certainly, no matter how you look at it, it's way better than what we had thought it might be way back in March when, you know, some cities were projecting a $50 million decline. We didn't do that, but we're 50% better than we were, 50% of what we'd originally expected. So, you know, there've been a lot of questions, what have you been doing? What have you been doing to get ready for this? And we've talked about how from the day one, we started tracking everything, we started cutting costs, and that's really the two ways that we have attacked this thing. We've known that we've had a little bit of leeway because we had reserves built up to record levels for the corporate fund. We were prepared from a financing standpoint, certainly more prepared than we've been for some previous downturns, and that definitely helped us all out. Well, one thing is, I talked about it before, I think last month, I said we were looking at a $3 million lapse. In other words, not spending $3 million of corporate fund budget authority. This month, we have changed that to 2.5, and the reason for that is the motor vehicle parking fund. Meters have been extended to free until the end of the year, and we also have not been getting some of the revenue in that we had expected, namely from across the street for that parking ramp, and then, of course, Washington ramp has been down since people aren't coming downtown nearly as much. So we're looking at having to subsidize the MVP fund. At budget, we were thinking 50,000, 100,000 more than normal. It's actually going to be closer to a half a million. So that's why you're seeing that 3 million go down to 2.5. Our motor vehicle parking fund, again, our meters, our Washington garage, our air rights across the street, all of those things are the primary contributing factors or revenue sources for the MVP fund, and they're just not there. And so we're, you know, at some point, I know we're going to address meters and some other parking issues, but given the pandemic, a lot of those things have been put on hold. So we do have roughly half a million dollars now planned to subsidize the motor vehicle parking fund. But still, 2 and 1/2 million in lapsed expenditures, which is a good thing. Here's the other thing. So we've been trying to, again, from day one, we've been tracking expenses, knowing that there was some stimulus out there that we could go after. And it's interesting because over time, the interpretation of what we could spend that money or what we could ask for reimbursement has changed, and every time I come up here, it seems like I'm telling you something new, and that's because we're getting new guidance from either the federal government or the state government. And the latest guidance that we have is that we can have the presumption that our public safety expenses are associated with COVID response. What does that do? Well, it means that when we were talking about getting maybe 1 to 1.5 million dollars before in reimbursements, we're now changing that, and the expectation is we're going to get all 4.8 million in from the Cures and Cares Act, which is a substantial increase from what we thought. But again, we've been aggressively pursuing this, aggressively pushing this. The mayor from day one has been telling us to do so, and we, you know, we were able to work with the federal folks that we are in contact with and the state folks that we're in contact with to hopefully make this a reality. What you see in front of you is actually where we are to date. Those are all the claims that are in. So we have submitted claims for 4.8 million. We have been paid approximately 1.3 million. We got a check last week for 1.3 million, and that's where you see the green paid there. We have a check coming for 7,000 on the way. The others are all pending approval. If we get the approval, as we expect for all of that, we'll get the entirety of the 4.8 million that's currently allocated to us, hopefully within the month. That's the goal. So we're pretty excited about that. So put it all together, the cuts that we've been doing, combined with the aggressive pursuit of COVID response dollars, and what does it mean? It means our P and L has changed, our profit and loss statement has changed here. We have incorporated the 1.3 million that we have to date so far, and if you scroll or if you look all the way down, or scroll if you have this computerized, all the way down, you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of Scenario A, about 2 million of deficit spending this year, about $2 million use of fund balance. Scenario B, somewhere in that $3 million range. Scenario C might be in the $4 million range if we had one on there. So certainly a vast improvement from what we have reported before based on a variety of positive factors that have occurred over the last month or two. Certainly, we hope to continue to see that. The only thing I will say, there's a note on there, the P and L that is here, it's two things it doesn't include. It doesn't include the entirety of the reimbursement because we don't have that approved yet, so we're not going to put it in there. It'd be silly to do so. It also doesn't include a matter that's before you tonight, which is whether or not to do the additional nearly $600,000 in police and fire pension funding per the ordinance that you all passed in the spring. That'll answer any questions, if there are any.
Any questions for Director? Alderman Hanauer.
I guess I'll ask the question then, based on still with everything going on and still outstanding, your recommendation is to hold the additional payment?
That's my recommendation.
At least until we find out if we get everything and then look at it?
Well, yeah, and I probably should clarify this. So this year, obviously, we're a lot more comfortable with where we are. We have stimulus money coming in, we've cut expenses way back. Next year is the problem. Next year, we're starting to look at, I sent you out some pension reports today showing a 3.2 million dollar increase. I do need to amend that. You'll get new report tomorrow because we found out towards the end of the day today, one of our staff members, Dallas Whitford, actually discovered a million-dollar mistake in the actuary report for the police. It's not 2.3 million, it's 1.3 million or something like that that's going. So the 3.3 million we thought we were going to increase next year is actually going to be 2.3 million, which is still substantial versus what we've seen before. I don't recall ever seeing a $2 million increase before, plus increase before, but certainly that's a far cry from 3.3 million. So a little bit of good news there in that he was able to discover that mistake. We contacted the actuary, said, hey, what's going on here? And they said, well, we made a mistake, they fixed it, you'll get a new report tomorrow. But the fact is, we have a 2.2 million just on police and fire pensions next year, and right now, the very first rough crude pass that we've done for revenue is somewhere between a 500,000 and million-dollar increase in corporate fund revenue. So you're already a million-dollar disadvantage there, and that doesn't include the pilot that most certainly will go down because 33 has been down for, what, a year now or so? And of course, we can't count on any stimulus money next year. We got, we're getting through this year much, much better because we're getting nearly $5 million in stimulus money. That combined with the aggressive cuts that the administration put in place since March is going to help us in this year pretty close to even, maybe a little negative, maybe a little positive, actually. There's no guarantee we're going to get that money next year. I've been watching all day the news. They've been talking about stimulus, they're trying to get a deal done, and it's, I just looked at it before I came up here, and it's not looking good right now. I mean, maybe something will come later, but we can't, we can't budget on hope. We're not going to budget on hope.
Alderman Redpath.
So due to the report that you gave that our fourth quarter sales tax is unpredictable, maybe we should hold this for, when will we get that report about the fourth quarter? That would be in January or?
Well, no, because the taxes will be generated in November and December, but there's a three-month delay.
So we won't know until March?
So we won't even see the November numbers until, what, February? And the December numbers in March, is that right? Yeah. Yeah, so the December numbers, we won't even see until March, which is the new budget year.
And we want, I think we want to make the extra payment to the police and fire pension, but I think that we have to be careful if we don't know what those numbers are going to be because it could be in.
Right. And you can always do it later. You don't have to do it now. The purpose of bringing the ordinance in front of you, Alderman, is simply, we have an obligation, a responsibility, once we run the numbers and we see where it lands, to bring the ordinance to you, and then it's up to you all whether or not to approve it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion, dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the October 6, 2020 regular City Council meeting, and approve the minutes.
To move.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading, first reading of ordinances in the record of this City Council meeting.
To move.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this City Council meeting.
To move.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
President. 412 and 13.
412 and 413.
Noted.
And for me, clerk, it's 390. I'm the president on that one.
Noted. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Donlin.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the recognition. I had a conversation with Corporation Council prior to the meeting. There are three ordinances on the consent agenda. Agenda items number 2020-395, 96, and 97. They all deal with Sloan Crossing subdivision out in Ward 9, and just for clarification, the ordinances, it's one of those ordinances, these ordinances that you provided options. I just want to be clear for the record that on ordinance number 395, that the City Council agrees with the recommendations of the Land Subdivision Committee and the Regional Planning Commission, and that we approve to allow for more than 70-unit subdivision with only one access point. And then for 396, that the City Council agrees with the recommendations of the Land Subdivision Committee and the Regional Planning Commission, and that we approve to allow for not stub street to the south of the subdivision. And then finally, on agenda item number 2020-397, that we, in Section 1, mark approve, and then in Section 2, we mark approve. This deals with the same subdivision. Just for clarification.
Thank you.
Asking for further clarification?
Yes, Alderman McMiniman.
So regarding stubs, streets, could you repeat what, because there was disagreement between the land subdivision and the Regional Planning Commission, Commissioner McFadden made a recommendation that we allow three stub streets, and I'm just not sure what you read there, Alderman Donlin.
Sure. And Mayor, if, we do have representatives of the subdivision here that can probably better explain it than I can, so.
If they'd like to come up and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Steve Walker with Martin Engineering. What was the question again?
I just need clarification whether we are approving what the Regional Planning Commission adopted as a final recommendation, because it differed from what the land subdivision recommended.
Correct. At land sub, we had one stub street to the west. Regional Planning Commission recommended that we, they approved it subject to two stubs to the west, and that's the plan that's before you.
And that's what we're approving tonight?
Correct.
Good. That's outstanding clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. So any other questions or comments regarding that particular item or different?
Not that item. I just.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to make sure, 2020-402, that's as we amended last week. That's correct. With 125 and 125.
Yeah, each, the terminal operators will be billed 125 as well, the local establishments.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Agenda number, I'll make a motion or request a motion on agenda number 2020-398 needs to be held until November 4th, City Council meeting?
To move.
Been moved in second, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
That pertains to what, Mr. Mayor?
Just very briefly, that is an annexation ordinance. However, the publication was not in place in time for the council to act today, therefore would be at the next council meeting.
So we're taking that off the consent? So we're taking that off the consent?
That is correct. If it could be held, or until the next meeting, so we may properly vote on it.
Thank you.
That has to do just with the SGR publication, because of the otherwise.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on the final passage, with the exception of agenda number 2020-398.
To move.
Been moved and second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda as proposed, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open, and Clerk will call on Alderwoman DeSento.
Alderwoman DeSento, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the consent agenda passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2017-103, 2018-110, 2019-008, 2019-430, 2020-067, 2020-153, 2020-207, 2020-273, 2020-289, 2020-314, 2020-315, 2020-330, 2020-331, 2020-332, 2020-333, 2020-346, 2020-378, 2020-379, 2020-380, 2020-401, and 2020-404 remain tabled during committee. Is there any movement on any of those? Next item on the agenda is 2020-363, an ordinance amending Chapter 37 financial policies of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances, as amended to add section 37.35, separate tax increment finance, financing accounts, which has been amended to funds.
Correct.
The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-363 on final passage.
To move.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion?
Did you say we're changing accounts to funds?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If you recall, there was an amendment in committee, so that amendment has been corrected, and so the ordinance you're voting on tonight is the amended version from the committee.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman DeSento, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes as amended, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2020-391, an ordinance authorizing reallocation expenses in the amount of $37,200 for the relocation of the personal property located at, on parcel SR 0066, located at 1126 North 10th Street, relating to the Springfield Real Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-391 on final passage.
To move.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman DeSento, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you.
So the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, and one voting no. Next item on the agenda is, yes, Alderman Hanauer?
I'd like to request we take 392, 393, and 394 for ominous vote.
Been moved and second, to take agenda number 2020-392 through 394 on an ominous vote. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2020-392, an ordinance authorizing the contract with Springfield Downtown Parking, Inc., for the purchase of real estate located at East Jefferson Street. PIN is 14-27.0.460-004, in the amount of $303,000, and closing costs in the amount of $2,500, and for a total amount not to exceed $305,500, relating to the Springfield Real Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Item agenda, item number 2020-393, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Mark S. Moore for the purchase of real estate located at 1025 and 1023 North 10th Street, in the amount of $4,500, and closing costs in the amount of $500, and for a total amount not to exceed $5,000, relating to the Springfield Real Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Agenda item number 2020-394, an ordinance authorizing contract with Lilian Potts for the purchase of real estate located at 1124 North 10th Street, in the amount of $22,000, and closing costs in the amount of $1,500, and for the total amount not to exceed $23,500, relating to the Springfield Real Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-392, 393, and 394 on final passage.
To move.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderman DeSento, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, and one voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2020-399, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $8 million for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-399 on final passage.
To move.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Alderwoman DeSento, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is item number 2020-406, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $589,323 for the Office of Budget and Management. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-406 on final passage.
To move.
Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer?
In light of Mr. McCarty's recommendation, I think it'd be wise to hold this until after the first of the year, at least. Try to get an idea where our sales tax is at that point. Right now, it looks, you know, we're still trying to even all this out. I'd hate to throw, you know, I'd like to see us do this, but I don't want to do this and then hurt us in the long run. I think, I'd like to make a motion that we hold it.
Second.
There's already a motion on the floor.
Alderman McMinim?
There's already a motion on the floor. You asked for a motion for a passage, and it was first and second, a substitute motion could be made.
Alderwoman DeSen, or I'm sorry, Alderwoman Turner?
I actually made the motion for approval, and even though, even though I feel like that we decided that we were going to do this, and that it becomes part of our financial commitment, and I am prepared to vote yes, but I will rescind my motion, so that Alderman Hanauer can make his motion.
I'll make a motion that we hold it until after the first of the year.
Second.
Is that, we have to rescind the second on the previous motion?
If it's by agreement, that the initial motion and second is withdrawn, then a subsequent motion is appropriate. You may certainly refer it back to committee, or simply direct it to be held on the agenda to a certain date. Whichever you prefer.
We'll hold it till March.
What's your pleasure, Alderman McMinim?
Well, I think if the motion is withdrawn, then the second goes away also, but as far as the discussion of what we're doing here, we've seen basically 20 years of ever-increasing mountains of police and pension debt, and ultimately, this council has a responsibility to recognize the severity of the problem, whether it be in good times, which would have been preferable the last 10 years, we could have done something about it during the good years, but instead, the mountain of police and fire pension debt doubled from $200 million to $400 million. So this problem is not going away. I think, Mayor, you offered a reasonable approach, that is a very small approach, but it was reasonable in the sense that we're looking at our corporate fund reserves to see, well, how much is there, and how much might we put into the police and fire pension fund? So based on the report that our budget director just gave, we ended the fiscal year with $28 million, and we're saying, let's put a half a million dollars of those reserves into the police and fire pension fund, which is a very small step, but at least, it's a step. We should remember that just last month, we received a report from our outside auditors, and the report said that our police and fire pension fund debt grew by $40 million, over $40 million in just one year. And that's based on a future rate of return of, I think it's based on 6.75%. There's an actual aerial rule that if you lower that expected rate of return on invested funds going forward, that for each 1% rate of return reduction that you make, the amount of debt is recalculated to be 25% larger than what it is. So what we're really dealing with here is a much larger mountain of debt than what we actually get reported to us. I think it's more in, in close to $600 million of police and fire pension debt. When the first Maryland federal left office, the actual debt was 15 million, 1-5, $15 million was the total amount of police and fire pension debt at the time. And now, a more realistic amount is $600 million of police and fire pension debt. So it's irresponsible to keep deferring a responsibility to do something about this, and this is a small step, it's really a small step. And so I think it's very disappointing if we, the conditions are just going to get worse, folks. The financial conditions of the city are just going to get worse going forward. We've got an international recession underway that will last for some period of time. It's a national recession, it's an Illinois recession, and if we say no to this tonight, believe me, the same rationale for saying no tonight will be a no in March, and our pension debt will just keep growing. Now, bear in mind, we've got, the next ordinance up is a quarter of a million dollars coming out of the corporate fund, just like this one, a quarter of a million dollars to the Springfield Saguaman Growth Alliance. I'd ask those that are going to vote no to spending our corporate fund balance to pay for our police and fire pensioners, are you going to vote no, yes, vote no for a quarter million dollars that we send to a corporate, to a county economic development fund, which is flush with cash right now? The Springfield Saguaman Growth Alliance has over $2 million of funds now, and so I hope that if we say no to this ordinance, we better be saying no to the very next ordinance, because it's going to gut our corporate fund also. So those are the facts, as I see them.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Alderman, I, you must be, you must have a crystal ball, because I don't think anyone in here said we were voting no on this. I think we were, we asked to hold it till March, so that we know what the actual numbers for COVID is for us. You know, that, that's what I asked. I didn't ask for a final vote. If you want to vote on it, we can, but I would, I think we'd be better served, rather than just killing this thing and have, bringing something back up, that we, we look at it, we just hold it till, till February or March? I mean, I don't think there's anyone in here, we don't, we don't want to put ourselves in a situation that we could regret.
Alderwoman Conley?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Hanauer, I appreciate your concerns on this one, and the thought of holding this. I just feel very strongly, we made a commitment when this was passed, to our police and fire department, that we would, whenever possible, at the time when we're presented with the year's budget, make this additional payment, so I will not be voting in favor to hold
Any other discussion to send back to committee, is that correct, counsel?
To hold it to a certain date, which I understood to be March of 2021, is that correct?
Yeah.
I think the, I guess, discussion on that would be, this was supposed to be for this year's payment, so I'd make the recommendation that be before the end of this fiscal year.
The end of February. The last meeting in February would be fine by me, if it's fine by everybody else.
So it's to the end of February?
Yeah, that way.
Or in February?
The last, the last meeting of the fiscal year, I guess it would be, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Alderman Repath and Alderwoman Turner?
No, Alderman McMinim, I don't think anybody disagrees with you on this. We've been seeing this pension debt multiply every year, and it's very frustrating for all of us that are sitting here. This is an optional payment in conjunction with the next ordinance, which, the $250,000 is what we've made commitment to fund. So I'm not going to vote no against this, Joe. I'm not, I'm not going to vote no not to put more money in the pension system. I really, we all want to do that. We're just asking to hold on to it for a little while. I don't think anybody here is trying to be subversive by saying they're not going to vote for it. I think they want to, they want to do it, and the mayor's right. It's, this is one for this year, and we don't want to make this payment for next year. So if we get to the point where we get to February or March, and we pass this thing, we got to be prepared to think about passing additional monies if we have it available. That's all we're doing. I really don't think there's anything subversive going on. We really just are concerned about the sales tax numbers that are going to come in for November and December, and that's, that's the best I can see. If it fails, it fails, it's up to you guys.
Alderwoman Turner?
As, as one of the sponsors of this, along, of the ordinance that provides for this payment along with Alderman Hanauer, I do agree with Alderwoman Conley that we did make a commitment, and that was, that was the reason why I made the motion to pass it. However, I do understand that we are in very unprecedented times with COVID, and how that has really played havoc on our finances. I would be amenable to holding this if we only hold it, if we only hold it to the point where we can make the payment within this current fiscal year. So if we have a date that says we will make the, we will bring it back and make the payment within this fiscal year, then I would be a yes on holding it, because I really feel like that, if we do that, we are still holding to our commitment to make the payment.
And that would be March 31st, correct?
No, it'd be, it'd be...
End of February.
End of February.
Okay.
The last meeting in February.
So can we put a date on that, please? I mean, I know you can't, because you don't have a calendar.
I don't have the calendar, but it'd be the last city council meeting in February.
I'd say the first city council meeting in February, because by the time it passes and gets signed, that'll give us enough time to transfer the funds.
Okay.
The pension funds by the end of fiscal year.
And Director?
The council meeting in February.
And Director, you'll have November's numbers by then, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be February 2nd.
February 2nd, I won't have November's numbers.
Yeah, I was just going to say, it'll be like mid-February.
Like February 10th, when I'll get them.
But we're going to put the date of February 2nd for the ordinance passage, that's the first Tuesday.
That's fine.
So any other discussion on that? All in favor to send it back to committee with the action date of February 2nd, 2021, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is knock-in number 2020-407, an ordinance approving addendum 2 to the agreement with the Land of Lincoln Economic Development Corporation, previously authorized by ordinance 237-06-18, to provide an additional $250,000 for a total amount not to exceed $750,000, and extending the date of completion of the project until February 28, 2021, for the technical and professional services for economic growth within the city. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2020-407 on final passage.
To move. Second.
Been moved and second, any discussion?
Further discussion, Mayor?
Yep, Alderman McMinim?
I've voted no to the two previous quarter million dollar contributions, and besides the reasons stated earlier, that we're taking corporate fund money that needs... the reasons stated earlier that we're taking corporate fund money that needs to go to other purposes, there's two other factors here. The city of Springfield taxpayers are really paying for this twice. We're paying for it because we're all county citizens, so when the county government makes a contribution, they contribute half a million dollars per year. You know, city taxpayers have contributed to county government, county taxes that permitted them to make the, the payment. But then we pay again, we subsidize it again a second time as the city of Springfield when we pay it to the, the SSGA, the Springfield-Sagman County Growth Alliance. But guess who doesn't pay it twice? Chatham residents, they don't pay for it twice because there's no municipal payment from Chatham, there's no municipal payment from Rochester, there's no municipal payment from Williamsville, there's no municipal payment from Pleasant Plains. So I just think that Springfield residents are being over, overtaxed on this, and that's the other reason for voting no. And then the third reason is that I think our best economic development strategy for Springfield is to do infrastructure projects, whether it be the gateways on South Grand or Cook Street or Peoria Road. That's where I'd like to see a quarter of a million dollars spent every year to improve those gateways in the Springfield. I think we get more direct benefit, and the city, citizens of Springfield can look around and say, oh, okay, now I understand where my tax dollars are going. That's where it's been spent. And so those are the reasons why I'll vote no, although I, I respect the intention behind the Springfield-Sagman Growth Alliance. I think a good new director's been brought on board with a lot of municipal experience, and he's living in Springfield, and he's reaching out to the council and being available, and I think that's all real positive. But on the financial question, I think this cannot be afforded right now because we've got the COVID environment before us. As our budget director pointed out, we've got a lot of uncertainties, a lot of unknowns regarding our financial future, and this is one where we can avoid spending some money, and we should. So that's the thinking.
Any other discussion? Alderman Fulgenzie.
I think this is a worthwhile project. Anytime we can spend money for economic growth within the city, that has a reward, and we see it coming back multiple times. And I, I think this is a very worthwhile project and I'd like to see it passed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. I don't know if Ryan Ruon say anything or... Voting is now open. Alderman DeSanto, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you. So the ordinance passes eight voting yes, two voting no. Next item on the agenda is docent number 2020-410, an resolution estimating real property taxes to be levied to partially fund the statutory contribution of the police and fire pension funds. Chair Lentana, motion to place agenda number 2020-410 on final passage.
Still moved, second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Alderwoman DeSanto, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And the ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docent number 2020-414, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Susan Allen. Alderman Hanauer.
I'd like to make a motion. We, we do an ominous vote for 2020-414 through 2020-423.
Second. They're moving second to do an ominous vote for 2020-414 through 2020-423. Right?
That's correct.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2020-414, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Susan Allen to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission. Agenda number 2020-415, an ordinance approving the appointment of Richard L. Austin, M.D., C.H.S.E., to the Commission of International Visitors. Agenda, docent number 2020-416, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Polarmayorga to the Commission of International Visitors. Agenda number 2020-417, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Janet K. Kinney to the Commission of International Visitors. Agenda number 2020-418, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Joyce Narduli to the Commission of International Visitors. Agenda number 2020-419, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Justin Blandford to the Commission of International Visitors. Agenda number 2020-420, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Frank McNeil to the Commission of International Visitors. Agenda number 2020-421, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Ronnie Mohan to the Commission of International Visitors. Agenda number 2020-422, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Harish Bhatt to the Commission of International Visitors. And agenda number 2020-423, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Michael Kokel to the Commission of International Visitors. Chair Lentana, motion to place agendas number 2020, what's the first one? 414?
414.
414 through 2020-423 on final passage.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Redpath.
The 2020-420, does this guy really have international experience to deal?
[laughing].
That's all I got.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Yes. Clerk, on 2020-419, please mark me as present.
Noted.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Alderwoman DeSanto, how do you vote on the rest?
Yes.
Thank you. And the ordinance passes nine, or 10 voting yes, one voting no, with the exception of 420, I'm sorry, 4, or 2020-419, nine voting yes, one voting present. Next item on the agenda is docent number 2020-424, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Salve Xarmi for the purchase of real estate located at 2007 and 2021 North 11th Street and 1001, 1005, 1013, 1019, 1021, and 1025 East Jefferson Street in an amount not to exceed $2,940,000, closing costs in the amount of $10,000 for a total amount not to exceed $2,950,000 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Chair Lentana, motion placed, agenda number 2020-424 on final passage.
Still move.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to clarify, this amount is fully reimbursable, is that correct?
Yeah. You want to say anything, Nate, or?
Just want to, just want to say it again. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's through IDOT funds or through the capital fund.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Alderwoman DeSanto, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you. And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2020-444, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number 21-750, 751, 029 from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity under the Local Tourism and Convention Bureau Grant Program in the amount of $257,027 with matching funds required in the amount of $64,256.75, beginning July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau for Emergency Passage. Chair Lentana, motion to place agenda number 2020-424 on emergency passage.
Still move.
Second.
They're moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting now open. It's on first read. Okay, so it'll be a roll call vote. Yep. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderwoman Turner.
Yes.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Yes.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeSanto.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Present.
Noted. Alderwoman Conley.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes and one present, Mayor. And then a vote yes. You'll vote yes. Thank you. 10 and one present. So the ordinance passes 10 voting yes and one voting present. Chair Lentana, entertain a motion to pull out of committee 2020-401 with regards to the rail improvement project for purchase of property, 918 East Edwards.
What was the number again, Mayor?
2020-401.
Make that motion.
So I still have one other thing I want to check on that, so. I mean, is there, is there?
Urgency to that.
Right. Is there, is there emergen, is there an emergency with it, or? Are you, are we going to start the railroad tomorrow, or does it need to?
No.
I'm just, I'm just asking. Are we, is it, are we shoveling up something tomorrow, or what?
We could be, but no. Actually, I'm Steve Warren from Hanson, and on this particular parcel, this one's involved in condemnation, and we've, we've agreed to a stipulated settlement with this, with Mr. Turnus. So moving it forward allows us to continue with the condemnation so that we can get it, so we can get it purchased for Usual Segment Five, which is being let possibly this March. So this is part of Usual Segment Five, so it's really important that we get it moving as fast as we can.
Okay. Well, okay, well, let's get this moving as fast as we can for Mr. Turnus since he moved really fast on cleaning up that mess he made at this same location that we had to take him to court multiple times. So let's move it for him fast.
I believe he has a fine, if not, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to make it.
No, I think he paid all the fines after we had multiple litigation.
You're correct. He did pay all the fines after we had multiple litigations, and there were a couple of different orders that he cleaned up even before, before it actually got to the fine stage.
No, it, it sat there.
But you're correct, it did sit there for a while.
It sat there for years.
Correct.
Yeah. While is, putting it mildly, it sat there for years.
Correct. But I believe for a March letting, December 16th is the, the date that we're supposed to have all of the rideaway certified. And we're just trying to wrap up the last couple parcels, just to let you know, date-wise.
Can we hold it for two weeks then?
No, that's okay. But we don't want to, we don't want to, we don't want to, never mind, just listen.
Now, Treasure Busher. Treasure Busher.
Alderwoman Turner, I just want to let you know that Mr. Joe Turnus Senior does owe the city $25 on a parking citation and owes the utility $18.19 for a total debt of owed $43.19. And what I tell Director Bottom we will do is when the check is cut, we will have him come pick up the check after he pays his fines.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Such a deadbeat.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, but we don't have a second yet, Mayor.
Second.
They're moving second. All in favor, pulling out 2020-401 out of committee. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. 2020-401, an ordinance authorizing a contract between the city of Springfield and Joe Turnus for the purchase amount, or I'm sorry, purchase of real estate located at 918 East Edwards Street in the amount of $11,000 related to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project for the Office of Public Works. Chair Lentana, motion.
Still move.
Second.
They're moving second to approve 2020-401. And second, any discussion? All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Alderwoman DeSanto, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you. The ordinance passes eight voting yes and two voting no. And that concludes our portion of the city council meeting. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council?
Okay.
Yes, Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mayor. I was a little surprised to see on first reading, and this gets to the, the old business, but the contract for Comcast. And the reason why I was surprised is because, and we're giving them a 10-year contract, which I don't know if I'm, we'll talk about that next week. But I'm a little concerned because we do have a neighborhood out in Oak Park Estates where they elected not to put cable in, and they want to charge the people out there $2,500 a house, and I know, to, to, to put cable in. And as, as that development goes, they're going to have to go through that area to get to the next ones. Now, I've alerted Mr. Zirkle about that, and, and to date, they still have not ran cable. And I will tell you that, that I will do everything I can to hold that contract and lower that contract until we get some, something done out there because the people have moved in, they're trying to get cable, that, you know, here we are, we've got kids that, that are homeschooled, you know, or not homeschooled, but, you know, remote learning, things like that. It's important. And I just find it interesting that their contract comes up right now when we're kind of in a, in a battle with them. And the other part to their contract is, it is a 10-year agreement that we, if we pass this, we won't, we won't get any satisfaction from them in 10 years, until, in nine years. In nine, in the ninth year, they'll start do, they'll start reacting to us. And I know now we are starting to see some different entities come in and do broadband, but they're slow getting rolled out. And so I just want to, Mr. Zirkle, if we can get them to react a little faster, perhaps we could react a little faster as, as the council to, to pass an agreement with them. But right now, I'm not, I'm kind of like, like Alderwoman Turner on the last ordinance, I'm not really feeling the, the need to really proceed very quickly with their, their issue. So that's the first issue I have. The second one, we've had problems out in Ward 10 and Ward 8, and you guys will eventually have them, with different broadband, with a broadband company coming in, they tear up, they tear up the yards. Now, I will give, give one of the companies a very, you know, they do make it right, and they, they fix it up. But, but while they're, they're going in, they're, they are not giving good notification to the people prior to digging in their yard. And I think that we need to set rules, and if we have to do an ordinance, I'll be happy to be a sponsor, but there, we need to have strict guidelines on how they notify people on what they're going to do in their yard. Most of the ones from I-3, they look, they look like they're trying to make you buy, that, you know, they're marketing. They did it on my street. I purposely looked at, I kept everything that they had, and nowhere did it say they were digging in the yard. They just said, I-3's coming, or something like that. We need to have something more concrete on how they do things. And then, so they get through on one street, and lo and behold, everything's finally, you know, grass is growing back, and another company comes in, and I was never notified, and none of the people were ever notified, they were doing broadband to Lindsay School, Rachel Lindsay School, and so it tore up people's yards again. We, we got to get a handle on this. I realize we're limited on, on, you know, the FCC has rules, but we got to have some say-so or some rules on how they conduct themselves and how they notify people prior to just going and digging in a yard. That's, it's crazy. So.
Company's that, do you know?
I, I'm not sure who that is. It was, it was a.
No.
Nate, you know?
Nate's gone.
No, it wasn't I-3. It was another company that, that the school district, that the school district deals with.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. It's funny you bring that up, Alderman. You know, we were walking, walking our dog about a week ago, and we noticed, not even a week ago, but last few days, and we noticed that the, Julie had been through, and CWLP had been through and marked the water lines throughout, actually the subdivision I live in. And so... And so I got in touch with Public Works, and they informed me that I-3 is getting ready to do a project, and I do not recall receiving anything in the mail, maybe they did send something, but anyway, last, just coincidentally, last night, a gentleman was at my door and was describing that, you know, they're coming through, and it was a one-pager that showed what their rates are going to be.
Yeah.
And until I asked about whether or not they're going to be boring, that information was not necessarily offered. The gentleman was very helpful, and, and I really appreciate him coming by, but I think at absolute minimum, I thought it was great that, that somebody was physically coming through the neighborhood, but you think about it, we get a lot of, especially this time of the year, we get a lot of political stuff, a lot of ads and so forth in the mail, so some people miss that. I question whether some of the companies even provide notice in the mail, but if I hadn't have been at my house, I would never have known this individual would have been by, so I, I agree with you, open to ideas, open to anything, because there's going to be a lot of unhappy people that whose, you know, personal property is going to be disturbed. I know they're required, per the conversation with the Public Works Director, that they're required to put it back in the condition that it was in, but we all know that goes to, based on history.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, and I'm just going to double down on this again, I agree with you, Alderman Hanauer, Corporation Council, if we could get some sort of guidance around what we can and can't do, I've, again, been getting phone calls and texts and messages about I-3 coming in, and, you know, people have very little information about what they're doing, the assumption is they're going to get one of those big green boxes in their front yard, and, you know, obviously, I'm trying to help give information out, that what they're putting out is it's flushed to the ground, but there's enough confusion and, and uncertainty around it that doesn't need to be there, and, and I've seen their, I've seen the materials they put out, it's absolutely, it looks like a marketing piece, and I, I will say, for I-3, they've been very responsive when I've had to reach out to them, because I have constituents who've had damage done to their property, and, you know, not just grass, although I've got one person who just sotted their lawn last year, I, I mean, they're, you can't put grassy down and expect that to look like a sodded yard did, but, you know, they've, they've done some damage, and they fixed it, they've been very responsive in that way. That said, it would be nice to offset some of the anxiety, because it absolutely is unnecessary, and it puts a lot of stress on, on residents, especially when they realize it's going to be coming into their front yard, it's not just the city's easement, so if we could, as soon as possible, have some, some guidance around what exactly we can regulate and require, I would appreciate that, too, because it's definitely going to stay in Ward 8 for a while longer.
And, and one thing, just to let the other Aldermen and Alderwomen know, when they come through your ward, you'll know, because every street they go on, you'll have people call you and light you up, every street, and I can tell what street they're on by the phone calls I get, and when you try to explain to people that due to FCC regulations, we don't have a lot of power in this, they're, they're not real happy to hear that. So my only thing is, I think that there, there ought to be some type of regulations that we should be able to do that requires them that this is what the notification has to look like, by city code, this is what it has to look like, we are going to dig in your yard, period, let them, let them know that.
And contact information.
And their contact information, because, you know, the other part that people are get, people put brand-new sidewalks, we get, we, our, our, you know, some people occasionally get new sidewalks, or even the new streets, and they come in, they spray paint the sidewalks, put marks all over it, you know, and I know they're locators, but, I mean, then the paint never goes away, people, people get mad at that, you know, they, some, in some cases, they pay for their own, so that's my rant for the day.
Appreciate it.
That's all.
On the Comcast, one of the reasons to bring it forward is because it has been sitting vacant, and the contract continues, so one of the ways to get action is to bring it forward, so we'll be able to hopefully address those issues.
Mayor?
Ever brought up?
I was going to say, just very briefly, you may recall that when I-3 was here, the City Council did pass a regulatory ordinance that's allowed under the statute, I will do a summary of that and provide it tomorrow, so maybe it needs some, some updates to it, but we did take action that was allowed under the federal and state law, they're actually, you may recall, under I-3, they're actually operating under a state grant, so we did not even, we're not even allowed to insist that they do a franchise, if you recall, so I, but I will circulate the information about it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, and since we're, we're talking about items on first reading, I just ask Mayor if we could have someone from Salvation Army here for Committee the whole next week to discuss the, the agreement to operate the warming center.
Sure.
Day Center, thank you.
Other unfinished business? Alderman Repath.
I was hoping Nate wouldn't leave, I'm.
He's right there, he came in.
Do you have a railroad mowing report for me today? Alderman, um, former Alderman Voces asking about Peoria Road and some, and some of the other spots, can you, can you give us an update, and we get that out there to him?
I'll send it to you, I'll get it from Darryl, I'll send it to you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other unfinished business?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMenamy.
Going back to the problems we're having with the utility companies, we talked about Comcast, we talked about I-3, we need to also talk about Ameren, I've got a neighborhood now that's been tore up for three to four months, they've cut into the sidewalk in about 100 locations, there's gravel where they've torn into the sidewalks, and our Public Works engineers have been trying to help us with this, trying to get the Ameren to, to, to take appropriate steps, but because the sidewalks are trip hazards, we've got mothers with their baby carriages in the street because they can't safely go down the sidewalk, those sidewalks now with darkness coming in at 5:00, they're unsafe to walk on because they're trip hazards, just one trip hazard after the next, and so I think we do need to look to see what regulations does a city municipality have when you've got a utility creating negligent conditions for an extended period of time, and what tools do we have to get their attention? It's just unacceptable, it's from Willamore all the way over to Cherry Hills, south of Outta Park Drive, we've got about 300 homes in there, and the residents are upset, and they're calling about it, and I appreciate Nate, what TJ Hevisize has done, he's tried to get the attention of the concrete subcontractor of Ameren to get in there, but he's been busy on another job on the north side of town, but, you know, Ameren, they got to be responsible for planning, have a plan of work that does not disrupt our neighborhoods to this extent, like what's happening here and the others that have mentioned it tonight, so if we've got any kind of tools that are be, in our toolkit, you know, to go after the utility companies when they're being careless in the way they're planning their work of study, their work, their plan of work in our neighborhoods, it'd be helpful.
Is that for gas?
That's natural gas, they're doing good things, they're putting in new main lines in and laterals, natural gas laterals to each home, which is good, they're upgrading the old lines and putting in new lines, but still, they got to do it in a way that is less disruptive on a long-term sense, they're trying to do economies of scale, but they just leave everything disrupted until, at the very end, the concrete guy comes in, and it's, it's, it's not a good way of doing their work.
Any other old business? Alderwoman Turner.
Well, I just want to say, while everyone's ragging on all the bad digging that's going on, CWOP has started their improvement thorough project, and the company that's doing it is doing a really good job of coming in and putting things back the way they were, how they found it, and not making a mess at all, and so they're doing a good job.
Any other old business? This week's Facebook Live on Wednesday at noon will feature John Strumpffer from the Land of Lincoln Community Foundation, he's going to talk about their new visioning project, you know, to pull together community resources for long-term projects or short-term projects. And is there any new business come before the council? Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor, I, I know that Alderwoman DeSensio is probably too humble to bring this up herself, but I would just like to recognize and recognize her for the award she received from the Phoenix Center for the Outstanding Award, it's a big deal, and we're very proud of, of her work for the, the Phoenix Center and, and the, the population they serve, so just want to say congratulations to her.
Aw, thank you.
I was wondering if you were still on the phone.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Other new business, I had the pleasure of visiting a leader and someone that's been a really blessing to our community in Ward 3, and that's Mother Elizabeth McDaniel, she celebrated her 100th birthday, actually, it's today.
Yes.
October 20th, but we did it on Sunday, and she's been at Greater Alder Nation Tabernacle Church of God in Christ for over 50 years, and she's a super praise dancer, was one of her titles, she tried to show me at least a move or two, and she has a lot of gumption, she has a lot of spirit, and she's been a blessing in a lot of children's lives, she's also was a foster parent to over 60 children, which is amazing, and I didn't know if you want to speak to that, Alderwoman Turner?
It's not often that you get to celebrate someone's 100 years on, on earth and all the things that they've seen or witnessed, but Mother Elizabeth McDaniel's is a extraordinary person, and like the mayor said, she has been a foster parent to over 60 kids, and has also been in the school district as a foster grandparent up until the time she was 98, she was going in, and, and the kids just loved her, and, and she's still, she drove until she was 98, and just, you know, gets around on her own, and a real, a real star of in, in our, in our community, and someone that, I'm glad that we had the opportunity to celebrate on Sunday. She is one of the original members of the Super Senior Praise Dance Troop, and the mayor actually celebrated with them on their 10th anniversary at their, at their senior luncheon, and so the mayor said, ask her if she wanted to show him some of her moves, and she really showed him some of her moves.
It's hard to keep up with, that's for sure.
Yeah, I'm like, wow, I hope I can do that when I'm, when I'm 100, so thank you very much for coming out and celebrating with her, she was very excited about that.
Well-deserving, and that's actually Tina Latham, she's supervisor in the Public Works Building and Zoning, that's her aunt, so happy, happy birthday, so any other new business?
Yes, Mayor, I have a piece of business.
Great, go ahead, Alderwoman DeSensio.
Thank you, I've only had one complaint directly, but I've seen on some forums where people are complaining about the taste of water, my water tastes just fine, but I think it's a common problem throughout the city, and just wanting to get some answers on that, I don't know if any other Alder people have had any complaints, but I have had one, so just, just trying to get some answers on why that might be, and I know CWLP is working with this individual, but there have been a lot of questions out there.
Doug, you want to respond to that, or look into that?
Yeah, we, we can look into a little bit more, and we've had a couple complaints, I mean, the lake does turn over, you know, usually in the spring and the, and the fall, but they usually get right on that with, you know, with adding carbon, so it's not really, usually ends up being not too big of a deal, but we haven't really had any complaints too much, I mean, just a few.
Okay. Any other new business? We do have a couple people signed up to speak, Jay McBride. And as a reminder, if people would address the chair and not individuals with council, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it, Jay McBride, 3,300 Forsyth, and I'm, I'm here to speak a little bit in anticipation of you taking up the animal control contract, I do, I do want to say that I hugely appreciate all the perseverance on the city's part in looking at this contract this year, just a little bit of my background, I've been working with animal welfare issues in this city for over 20 years, and was involved when that contract was first established, I've been pulled back into that situation multiple times when questions of law have come up in operation of the Animal Control Center, and to be honest with you, it, it was just continuing to the point that in the last year and a half, I've decided I'm just going to persevere and stick with it and try to bring this to your attention as to some of the issues that we have had there, and so as, as I understand from Alderman Hanauer that you might be seeing something next week on a committee of the whole, the fact that we don't get to see that too much in advance, I wanted to talk before that came out, just to ask you once again, to please, I would think that you would look at this, that the county would provide you with a great financial statement as to exactly what they spend their money on and what services are involved, itemize it, let you know what they do spend money on, what they don't spend money on, and the like, just because I think it's very important that you manage and, and monitor that contract, and in particular, manage it. One example is that in the last year, three of the local animal welfare organizations have come forward and to provide critical care to animals needing vet care immediately, and I had to prove this up in the law to them, that they, this was part of their responsibility, they hadn't budgeted for it, so the animal welfare groups stepped forward to provide it, Illinois Humane Animal Protective League, and the Friends of Salmon County Animal Control. We've spent $25,000 doing that in the last year, we have a count of the animals, when we started this, the city could not give us that, the county could not give us data on what, what this would entail, but they are, under the law, supposed to provide care for these animals, get treatment by a veterinarian, instead they were only providing pain medication, perhaps prescribed over the phone without examining the animal, that's not legit. This is the kind of thing that's been going on and that we're very concerned about, now this is an in-kind contribution on the part of the animal welfare organizations, it should at least be considered in the budget, because if we walk away, the county or the city, and the city are indeed responsible for an expense like that, this is what I'm talking about, when they need to lay this out for you, what they are doing, what they are not doing in, in this budgeting situation, so in the course of some of this work, one of the things I have come up with and asked for is that indeed animal control be shifted over to management by the Sheriff's Department. Ralph, I, I, you know, I am going to persist on this, and I will tell you that the response I have gotten such as this is that they tell us that they're, under state law, the primary responsibility of animal control is rabies control. Maybe in the last century, I myself wrote into the Animal Control Act that overpopulation is an equal purpose of that statute, but in, indeed, there's many other aspects of many other statutes that comes into play that require law enforcement, such as one very important statute is the Illinois Dangerous Animals Act, which now is under animal control, such as when a primate or something like that is found in a home, it is animal control that has to step in there and take care of that situation, primates are extremely dangerous animals, and so you have to be ready for something like that, all of the requirements of getting into the home and securing that animal, getting the proper assistance, so there are many aspects of animal control, much more than rabies, rabies control that involve law enforcement, including all the procedures and policies in place that are required for court case dogs, impalements, and the like, so, plus the fact that we've got a sheriff with great management leadership possibilities, but, so that's just one example of one thing that's been proposed here, there are many, but there are, it, it's something that really needs scrutiny, and I would ask your attention and continuing attention in some form or manner, be it a stakeholders committee, an advisory committee, or something that maintains oversight of that contract, it, it is incredibly important that the city, you are 75% of the service area, you should, you must have a say as to how that contract is under, is, is operated, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Alderman Hanauer.
I had a conversation with Sheriff Jack Campbell, I can tell you that they, they, there will be no way that the sheriff will take that under his, he's got too much on his plate now, he looked into how other, other departments, namely over in Decatur and Macon County, they get funded by, I guess it's a very wealthy individual, and that's how they can do it, so, you know, my thing on the animal control is, we don't have a lot of choices, that's, that's the bottom line, we don't have a lot of. We don't have a lot of choices. We can put out an RFP, which I hope we do, we can put out an RFP for the, for, and see if anybody else wants to take it on and try to do it to the extent that you want it, Jane, but I think that, I don't think we have a lot of choices in the matter. We're, you know, Salmon County's it. Otherwise, we have nothing. And the only reason why I've been trying to push this is, we're how many months into the fiscal year, they're already doing the work. I know we're still negotiating with them, but are we going to pay for things that, you know, I know we negotiated with them earlier and then we just wanted to add more, but the, the contract's already halfway done. Now, if we want to get these pieces and go out for an RFP and see what other people are going to charge us, and, you know, then I'm all for it. But, right now, my concern is, we don't have a lot of choices in this matter. We can discuss that more next week, but...
Yeah, I think they're getting paid as, based on the, the contract continues in it, is that right, council?
Well, they're also getting paid through the fees that we pay for, for our pets. So, it's not like they're, they're broke. The majority of the fees that fund animal control come from the citizens of Springfield. So, you know, you know my feelings on this. I do think it should go out for RFP next year. I think there could be other options. Maybe there aren't, maybe this is all there is. But I think we need to definitely do our due diligence and see what else might be out there.
And that's why I would recommend an RFP before we, we go forward next year and see what's out there and, you know.
I'm with you.
Very good. Any other comments on that? We do have Tim signed up for the same topic. Is there a Tim out there? You can state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
My name is Imbena Kintako II.
Thank you.
I live at 909 North 15th Street. Thank y'all for allowing me to be here today. I come before you this evening in hopes of getting a better understanding of the process that is currently in place to help protect tenants from bad landlords. We are well aware of the protections and safeguards that the judicial system has provided to protect landlords from bad tenants. However, the average renter has very little understanding of how to handle a situation where the landlord is the problem and not the tenant. This is not a condemnation of any particular individual or office, however, it is an attempt to raise awareness to an ongoing problem that is affecting lower income residents of this city. If there would only have been a small number of people that I had spoken with concerning this matter, I would have just followed standard protocol and referred them to the Community Relations Department. The fact that so many people reached out to me ensures me that there is a lack of public awareness to the protections already in place to help these tenants. To understand the importance of the necessity to implement new and innovative ways to educate and consistently monitor these issues, I think it is imperative to express some of the issues and views brought to me by some of your constituents. I am also well aware that some of you may currently have more homeowners than renters in your wards. However, I do not believe that to be sufficient grounds for a lack of oversight concerning these matters. Due to fear of retaliation, these people have asked that I do not mention their names or their landlord's names until they can be reassured that speaking about, out about these issues will not cause them undue hardships. In one case, due to the lack of property, proper property maintenance, a tenant requested an early release from her lease, which was granted by the landlord. However, when this resident attempted to acquire another residence, she was told that she could not, that they could not rent to her due to a bad reference from the previous landlord. In another case, a tenant complained to his landlord about a plumbing problem that was causing water to drip from his upstairs bathroom into a downstairs bedroom. It took the landlord several months to fix the problem and to this day, the landlord has still yet to repair the damage caused by months of dripping water. These issues are real, from real residents within the city that are not properly being addressed, leaving the city's most vulnerable residents to live in inadequate housing conditions with no proper understanding of the process available to protect themselves. The average poor person does not have the luxury to just move when these sort of issues arise. And in one case, this was actually suggested by a landlord to a tenant, that if she had a problem with maintenance issues, she could just move out. Or another case, when a resident withheld rent due to a lack of maintenance, was threatened with eviction unless they paid. There is a plethora of residents of the city that have experienced, are experiencing, or know someone who has experienced an issue with a bad landlord and have just had to make do, due to the lack of education and of the administration process that the city currently has in place for its residents. Residents that have housing or Section Eight are afforded these protections from the government when it comes to proper and adequate housing, and they are made well aware of these protections from the beginning. However, the residents that are paying 100% of their housing expenses are left to fend for their sales against predatory landlords who feed off the lack of proper understanding residents have on protecting themselves. Not all landlords are bad, there are many good ones, but this is not an issue that we are here to address. We are here to ask the city to strengthen its programs and processes so that these low-income families are afforded the dignity to live in adequate housing. We also want to ask the question as it pertains to the safety and fire and health standards that are set in place for landlords. When was the last time these standards were updated and does it necessarily address humane living conditions? Because some of these houses are in really bad shape and are still being allowed to be rented. Too many people are allowed to just buy several properties and get by with doing the bare minimum to rent these places, and this is primarily affecting low-income families and single mothers who already have a multitude of pre-existing problems. There once was an organization called the Tenants Rights Association, which was designed specifically to help tenants. Now, this space is dominated by landlords' associations, which possess a certain level of camaraderie that does not work in favor of tenants. We are also aware of the role of the Land of Lincoln Legal Assistance plays in the Community Relations Department, to that we ask, if a tree falls in the forest and there is no one around to see it, does it make a sound? If people are not aware of these services, what can it actually do for the people who need it the most? Again, I would like to reiterate that this is not a call-out of any particular individual or office, but a mere concern from ordinary citizens about the importance of proper administration and education about the processes that are currently in place and a request to review and update to provide more friend, user-friendly approaches to rectify these issues. Most people do not want to be poor or live in low-income housing. However, life happens, and when it forces you into these low-income markets, we would still prefer to be treated like human beings.
Well, thank you very much for your comments. We'll have to check into, know your rights, you know, as far as tenants go.
Yes.
And if you would, if you do have specific complaints, you can get those to Juan Huerta. He's sitting in the back there, and then we can follow up on those.
Yes.
That'd be all right.
Yes.
Alderman Redpath and Alderwoman Conley.
I was going to ask, is, do we, do we, so, Lincolnland Legal Services, is that something we, that can help these folks?
First of all, you know, we, we're taking about 100, between 100 and 110 calls a month for landlord tenant's issues. And then if it's a legal issue, we, we deal with landlord, Lincolnland Legal System and the Catholic Charity, they got free legal system that they can help the clients. But if anybody has any issues, they can call our office. If it's an issue with the structural, with gas, with anything, we deal with building and zoning, and we send an inspector over there, and then they have so many days to fix the issues.
Are you working with this gentleman?
He, he came to my office once, and I, I gave him a couple books, but he has never, I, I reached out to him last week because I know he was going to speak, and I asked if he had any issues. He says, he says, no.
Well, obviously, there's issues, and he knows of some that are probably not getting retor, reported to us, Juan, so I hope that you can reach out and, and let's, that is a real problem. It is a real problem. I, I was a landlord for years, I understand the difficulties with, with things go in like that, but bottom line is that we gotta, we gotta try to reach out and help these folks.
Right, yeah. And if he gives the name, I'd be happy to call them. You know, we've been dealing with issues since, since April 1st.
No, I know your, I know your, I know your plate's really full, but we, this is important, and we're coming into the cold season, we don't need people being kicked out of their homes.
Yeah, we're working with, with the building and zoning and with the police department, with the Land of Lincoln, so...
Good, I'm glad, thank you.
Okay.
Alderwoman Conley and then Alderwoman Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank you for coming in tonight and speaking for your neighbors. Appreciate that they have someone willing to come in. It's even for someone who doesn't, doesn't have a complaint, it's not always easy to come in and talk to city council. I just wanted to ask you, do you think, what do you think would be a, a better way for the city to get sort of a coordinated, maybe an FAQ or a help document out to residents? I mean, is it, is our website a good vehicle? Is the Facebook page a better one?
To me, always, when you look at like internet options, it automatically is, lose a large portion of the people that need the help the most.
Right.
So, I don't believe that an internet option would be the best way to get that information to them, nor do I believe that the city should use extra funds to get somebody to go pass an information out. But however, I do believe that the conversation is necessary to come up with something that would be effective for the people that need it the most. Because these people that need it the most, some of them don't even have internet, some of them don't have Facebook pages, some of them wouldn't even know how to work the internet if they had.
Right.
But, so they're forced to just live constantly in these situations, and they don't feel like they have anything that's there to help them. However, I do want to say I have worked with him and he has been helpful. Anytime I reach out to him, he is helpful. It's just that the people that I'm talking to in the community, they don't even know he exists. So, that's an issue where we need to get in the forefront because there's so many people that's buying properties. And I'd be in the community all the time, so I see it all the time. They buying these properties, they do the bare minimum, they renting them out. And people, and most of the time, you could walk through to inspect a property before you move in, and you're not aware of all the problems that's in this house until you actually move in and start turning on water and turning on heat, and then you'll see that some of these things aren't working, or you got water dripping over here, or some of the, yeah, so, I, I don't know the answer to that question, but I think it's worth trying to figure out that answer.
Thank you. I would just ask that you stay in contact with Juan Huerta in his office, and because I, a good landlord is, is a valuable asset to the community.
Yes.
But a bad landlord drags us all down. I've, I don't know, I had a prolonged experience with that in Ward Eight. We, I have, I have a lot of rental property in my ward, and, and it's, it's important that people have safe, reasonable places to live. So, and if we can think of some ways to get information out about renters' rights, and, you know, there are, there are good landlords who probably would assist with that too, you know, but, but Juan is obviously, that's what his office is, is here to help with.
Yes, and then he, he did give me this book about some of the rights for, what the part that, for specifically for residents about when they're dealing with a landlord, and the whole book is like two pages. So, it really doesn't give enough information about what I could do.
Right. And, and I think so maybe we just need, maybe just a little more looking into where the problems are, because I, I've done that before. I've, I've worked in that sort of getting information out and, and maybe an updated fact sheet, or, you know, some updated quick and easy information so that we can make it more easily available to people would be.
Yeah, and one of the things that we did, we try to do every year is a, a community outreach with a landlord tenant, like a seminar. We have one last year at a South Side Christian Church. We're planning to do one earlier this year at the Salvation Army.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's so difficult right now.
But that, that is our goal, to do a landlord tenant seminar and help people, you know, like, you know, when people move out, they, they need to know that they have 30 to 45 days to get a deposit bag, if there is any issue with the landlord, those type of things. You know, if, if our, if our car is parked there for more than a week, you know, then call Public Works and those type of things. But I work, we work really closely with building and zoning, with the police department, with, with the county and those type of things, so, but if anybody has any question, they can call me at 789-2270. Like I said, we're getting anywhere between 100 and 120 calls a month. You know, we're helping people with rental assisting, with issue with their house, with the structure of the house, neighbors, and those type of things, and so, but yeah, they, you know...
Yeah, it's, it's a busy job.
Hey, Juan, have we ever tried, you know, most everybody has utility service. Have we thought about using that to try to communicate these kind of things to the, to people that have landlord problems? I mean, I'm not trying to dump something off in the utility, but that's the best way for us to get in touch with people. Obviously, you got electric and water, and so when they get the bill, they can, there could be information in there that could be useful for them to, to send, you know, show them where to go or give them some information.
Yeah, I can talk to doctors, see if we can put, we can put a brochure or something. I know that Public Works, when Public Works go to a house and they plaque the house, they have, if you have questions, to call my, our office. So, Public Works is already doing that.
The whole problem with this whole thing is communication. And, and that's where, like he said, people don't know where to go. And if we could help that by maybe using the utility bills to put messages in so people understand if they got a problem, they can go here, so...
I mean, like Alderman Proctor, Alderman Turner, Alderman Gregory, they have sent individuals to my, to my office, you know, and we try to help him, you know, especially if it's housing with the Housing Authority, that's another entity. So, I have, I had to call the director over there to try to work things out, because we have a good relationship with the Housing Authority, but at the same time, they got their own directors, you know, it's not like I can tell the director what to do. But yeah, you know, if anybody has any questions...
Just any avenue we can to improve our communication.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Oh, Alderwoman Turner?
I appreciate you coming because this is an issue that permeates throughout our community. And unfortunately, the individuals that are the most at risk for being affected by these issues are those low-income individuals that, that you're right, they, they already are forced to, you know, live in what could be considered substandard housing, and then they don't have many options once there are issues. So, there's a couple of, there's a couple of things. I think that people who have the wherewithal and find their way to Juan and get involved with, you know, city services, they get their problems resolved. Because, you know, we do have a, a process in place for those individuals that can actually get, get to that place. The, the problem and those that fall through the cracks are the people who don't get to Juan because they don't know what's, they don't know what's available. So, we do have to do a better job of providing information so that people know what their rights are and what they can do and where, where they, where they can go. And that's, it's a difficult thing, I know, but we have to, you know, just kind of keep at it and use every avenue that we have available. This is where having those partnerships with organizations and individuals that are in the community and are of the community really comes in, comes into play. And I think that we have to do, we have to do a little bit more of that. Sometimes we, when we talk about getting information out, we gravitate towards what I call the usual suspects, those organizations that everybody, you know, knows about, and, and they're always up and at them. But there are a lot of organizations and activists that are out, actually in the community that have contact with, with individuals that we need to identify and utilize them and, and their organizations in order to get information out. I think that the ward meetings is a good opportunity as well to have information out and have someone to talk about those things briefly and then follow up with another meeting where you can have a, a longer, broader conversation. And I think we need to take that out into the community. Too, too often, when we do these kinds of things, we, you know, we take it to the library, which is, could be considered a, you know, a centrally located place, but it's not in the community. Or when we talk about, you know, like South Side Christian Church, it's a good location, but it's not in, you know, in the community. So, I think that those are a lot of things that we just have to think about because communication and education is a big piece to solving, you know, these, these types of issues. And I think that we also have to be very careful because you are correct, the landlord association is very organized and they have a loud voice. I mean, it would just talk about trying to get some type of ordinances together, and you'll have this place packed with landlords talking about how put upon they are and, and all of that. But, you know, it's, it's very difficult to mobilize tenants in that manner, and they are probably have more issues that need, that need to be addressed. So, we have to do a better job of working towards engagement and work, you know, helping with that, with that mobilization. So, those are some suggestions that I think that we can look at during, in the, in the short term, as we work on things that we can look at during, for the long term.
Another thing that we're doing too, we're printing like a one-bedroom, two-bedrooms, like a houses for, for, for our citizens, because a lot of people don't have computers, they don't have access to the Housing Authority's information. So, that's another thing that we're doing when somebody calls and they, they need a housing or they want to move, we're printing everything for them, they can pick it up, we can help them, those type of things too. we can help them, those type of things too.
Right. And, and I want to say Juan, none of this is meant as a, as an indictment or, or that, trying to say that you're not doing a good job at, at what your task to do because you are for those people that know how to get to you. You know, I, anytime I've ever referred someone to you, you've gone above and beyond, you know, helping work, helping them work through their problem. Those are the people that can get to you. So we have to concentrate on how we engage those individuals that, that don't necessarily find their way to you.
Thank you. And I think it's important, and I mentioned that when I, when a few of the landlords that I do know found out that I was working on this, they did reach out to me and asked me not to do this. So that tells you there is, is a problem for sure because they, they did not want me to do this. But I think it's for the citizens in these communities that it's imperative that we do something to help you. And I'm willing to work with you on whatever you need me to work with you on.
That'd be great. Really appreciate it.
And actually, I recommend him for one of his missions, so he can help us, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Gregory?
Yes, thank you, and Benner. So Juan, I would be curious if you, if you could provide some type of summary to this, to this body of not every call that we get, but some of the, some of the repeat. I, I would imagine, I mean, that, that some of these houses have had the same issues and had to be reported. I, I can imagine if, if I lived in the house, I just, water leaking on my head and I moved out for that, the next person's going to have that same problem. So not all of them, but some of the repeat, some of the ones that we, that, you know, we, we constantly have in different residents, contact us about, I would like to, to look at that. And, and, you know, last week, thank you Juan, appreciate it. Last week, Nate, we, we talked a little bit about our, our, the inside inspections of, of some of these houses and some of these buildings and, and the progress of, of, or the registration or game plan of, of those, you know, to get better. So I, I want to, you know, get with you next week and, and see what we can, you know, just identify a few of them and check them out. But I appreciate it.
Next is James Meister.
If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it. And if you'd keep the comments towards me and not personalize it or mention anybody in particular, we'd appreciate it.
Name is James Meister, 164 St. Avenue, Lot Number One, here in Springfield, Illinois. By being forced to give my name and number and address there, I'm here in the fear of retribution as well as possibly my freedom. Several weeks ago, I appeared at this hearing talking about how we could do better as a council without the arguing, the bickering, the name-calling and things like that. At the end of that meeting, there was a comment made that I allegedly called somebody a name. I went back, checked into all this, watched the video again, I called this person no name at all. So I contacted the, uh, apologize, Inspector General of the City of Springfield, Roger Holmes Office, and I filed a complaint based on slander. Being as I did not make this comment and this person decided to say I did, he opened up a investigation or whatever he's going to call it. He contacted me a week or so later and asked me some more questions, told me that he had to talk to this person and that when he, when he did, he would get back with me with further questions. Apparently, he contacted this person. He did not contact me again for further questions. He just came, filed his report with the board here and made more false accusations. Said this person claimed even racism and threats of violence. I can prove both of these instances by the videos you post on your website. And then it's canceled. I have no repercussions, no rights. These two last claims that this person made against me are criminal, highly criminal. Physical threats to this board is a felony. My freedom is in jeopardy now. Racism is a crime. And in today's society, the way the NAACP and the Black Lives Matters are acting against white people that are alleged to be racist, my life is in danger now. But yet I wasn't invited to the meeting last time when he made his report. I had to find out about this by watching the weekly videos put on YouTube. I am now in fear of my life. I'm now in fear of my, my freedom. And I'm asking that this membership here now open a hearing. If this is true, obviously, I go to jail, but this is not true. These are just more accusations made against me again and again that are now jeopardizing my safety and my freedom. Again, this person has made inappropriate comments tonight by calling somebody a name. Apparently, the board thought it was funny. I'm a citizen of this Springfield. This board, again, is better than this. We do not need to be calling anybody names up here. But yet I'm standing up against calling people names and then being accused of it by one person, not once, continuously. And now I'm not only being, I, I'm not only saying this against myself, but this person is making comments against others. Reprisal, the last young man said, we are poor people, we can't afford attorneys, we can't afford anything else. This is the reprisal I get for filing a complaint of slander. I get more slander and now I'm in fear. Any questions?
No, appreciate you coming and sharing that. We did form Inspector General not to use any names with regards to that. And we'll do a better job as far as promoting, when he is going to give a report, he does that, I think, is it monthly or quarterly?
Quarterly, sir.
Quarterly. And so the one thing, he did say that he, he, the Inspector General asked all of us to have a higher standard of decorum, so appreciate you reminding us of that.
Right, but again, here saying not to use names, but the fact that I'm standing here, having to speak up a second time, having to give my name and give my address, just put me in danger for a thing that should have been handled appropriately and apologized on.
Time's up, Mayor.
Thank you for coming. Next is Jermaine Jones.
I'd like to greet the general council, the mayor, corporation council. Men and women here, peace and blessings be upon you all. I'd like to engage this conversation. This is an ordinance of life. I'm just reading, hopefully we all have some understanding. An ordinance of life, an organic ordinance of life, us, we declare our affidavit of life. In the beginning, God created the heavens and earth, Genesis 1:1. And God said, let us make man in our image, like, our likeness, and let them have dominion. So God created man in his own image, and in the image God created he/him, male and female, in earth by birth, born, by right, natural common right, a person, people, child, with bonded right. The organic law, natural ordinance, natural ordinance declaration, the nationalization of natural civility, natural law of God law, natural law under the natural respect, justice, adoration through the unity and the natural person. People, civility, soul right, whereas, A1, by the land of the United States of America, wherewith the Northwest Ordinance enacted 1787, three-fifths of all other persons not comprehended, free inhabitants, natural civility, black, negro, colored folk, African-Americans, we're claiming rights on. Within the land, to maintain and authority in natural organic nationality, tribal, cultural, cultural essence of our true divine nature as men, man, woman, woman, child, children, as the enlightened upon the world and land, whereas the dominion of the heavens and the earth, the state of persons, the land hereby established the state of people. Whereas, A2, under this sovereign state of mind, spirit of man, male, woman, female, son, daughter, hereby to engage documentation of nationality, wherewith other nationalities, through ethnicities, existence of people and persons to embrace the natural energy, vibration, soul, soul, belief and innovation of presentation through the natural civility inhabitants, free and unfree, three-fifths of all other persons, black, African-American, black people, negro, African, Afro-American color, to freely, respectfully pursue aspirations under this color of law, under the standard of life with the quality of life, whereas, A3, as this founded natural law, natural essential through self-freedom, natural nationality right, breathe a natural life, the breadth of life, the quality of life standard of living, assurance, sovereign right, under dominions of the heavens and the earth, land there, land themselves with the jurisdiction, due process, established, de hittiforeet. Whereas, A4, soul right, the nationality, flag description, identification, nationalization, black flag, white solid dot, center, 360 degrees in the center of its complete flag, were established upon the heavens and the earth. Whereas, the natural ascension, supreme ascension, protect persons, people, the law, the land, shall be established to exist as a peaceful, healthy vibration, variation of man, male, woman, female, as persons, people bonded by spiritual soul, as this righteous sovereign, sovereign state of God likeness, mind as a child, children. Men, male, women, women, female, be, be, between the heavens and the earth, dominions in which we live, having full understanding and belief to live under the true consent of laws removed, destroyed, stolen deeds, of generational deeds, deeds of, of said order, boundless ubiquity, belief, shall behold no bounty of life. A5, nor shall hold the bond detained any deed of life for us. We become, we came as ascendants, descendants, our supreme ascension of free man, male and woman and female, under the deharmitus trin, uh, deharmitus treaties. Name of city? Springfield, Illinois. Three-fifths of all other persons not comprehended, free inhabitants, the negro-colored, black mulatto, natural civility defined under the peaceful unions in this capital of Illinois. Whereas, language, all declared, under reading, writing, arithmetic, arts, science, holistic, sign language, all ethnicities will be and shall be welcome in all respects, peaceful and appreciative of all naturally, of all forms of language communicated, comprehend to understand the many variations of life. Few shall be welcome. How can that be? Disposition, all we ask is for peace. That's, that's why we're here. The quality of, the quality of life, the standard of living, with the declaration of articles through the breadth of life, three-fifths of all other persons, people, we come as ascendants, descendants, as a ubiquitous order of all things. We now come as a breadth of God likeness, our image of our Lord, by right born, birth from darkness into light, be the enlightened by spirit. Us, we come in truth, moving into the action with our likeness unto the world to petition in peace as a matter of life and life. This is not Black Lives Matter. We come in peace, respect, unity, humility, understanding, as for inspiration, responsibility in the pursuit of happiness and the purpose through the quality of life and the standard of living, natural, natural law right, the establishment of this hereby order unto the naturalization of like God order. We declare ourselves under this natural organic law. We, within us, we have a natural right to have the natural God law of respect, whereas a righteous accord under the quality of life bonded to the established accordingly standard of living under the dominions of the heavens and the earth to thrive in peace respectfully in natural law. Us, we, the descendants, the ascendants hereby establish supreme ascension, soul right spiritually through thought ascension before mankind. Us, we come as a selfless mankind embracing true natural God and goodness and respect enlightened by and through the likeness of God nature.
Point of order. Mr. Chair?
You're about done.
Can I finish, sir?
You have, you have another minute?
This is about life.
Sure.
This is, I mean, I know, we, we, when we come here, we speak about things. We, we never speak about the life and the challenges, you know, y'all had a, y'all had a, the chief come with the, with the, a Reform Act that brought principles. We're not bringing principles, we're bringing an ordinance of life. So there's a separation. Everyone has an ordinance of life up here except them two. That's it. That's just the truth of the matter. Everyone up here has an ordinance of life on them. Every nationality of people, we the last ones on the face of the earth that don't have a nationality or ordinance of life. We're called blacks, we're called African-American, we're called colors, we're called negroes. We call three-fifths of all other persons not comprehended.
Mayor, call time, please.
So if you could wrap it up, we appreciate it.
I mean, we've given him plenty of time, he's had double time.
Okay. Corporation Council, Mr. Mayor?
We'll have it. We'll be back here next Tuesday.
Excuse me?
We'll be here next Tuesday as well. So you have, you have two more minutes, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
We come in peace and a peaceful ordinance as well as treaties in this land, in this country, in the international peaceful territories under the enactment to introduce this proposal by declaration of federal jurisdiction. That's our right, that's it. Under the enactment of this, introduce this proposal of federal jurisdiction of persons, people by right and authority by the, by the Bill of Rights, 1689, due process, equal protection of the law, natural God law, natural right, hereby our authority presents the ordinance of life of descendants of three-fifths of all other persons not comprehended. A1, federal protections against murder, kidnapping, stalking, hanger, domestic terrorism, defamation of character, antisemitism, debt and other types of like forms that may harm us or cause injury. There's a single unlawful authority that calls this order, so we have a conflict with this. We all understand this. This is not just happening since I was born in 72, this has been going on since 1840 and before. So we greeting you all with the ordinance of life somehow to modify or nullify, the nullification, you could use the nullification act or, of the, of the, of the agenda, the ordinance that was previously set because we really, we didn't ever have, we never had no agent come here and speak for us. That's, that's our initial target. We had an agent that comes from amongst an institution of administrations for the state and that doesn't qualify that proper because if we give someone that kind of balance, then the people are disregarded. And that's how we all came to be about and was able to assemble 1780, 17, 1787. It was all done through conventions, ratifying the constitution, things of that nature. We got to come together and bring our minds together, not just one individual just coming and saying that they greet us and breathe, breathing on us and say, we had no agent to, no, no scholar of law to demonstrate for us. We have jump out boys over there, we're targeted all the time. You know, we have our children taken through DCFS and the family services all the time. We have men and women being arrested with. We have men and women being arrested with no warrants, no warrants. That's not just, that's not probable cause, because the compiled statute says, the compiled statute says, the compiled statutes are used towards us to negate us from any true pursuit of anything that's possible. So we asking you all, we're setting an ordinance of life. You all have the opportunity, the fabric, I mean, it's Springfield, Illinois, you all have the opportunity to fabric, to bring this to federal and possibly move it into legislation. You all can have a copy of it. Everyone, I mean, the city council, the mayor, the corporate council can have a copy of this. But we speaking about an ordinance of life on the people, not just so much as just someone is saying, oh, he's black, he's white. No, we have a nationality.
If you'd like to give that to the clerk, he'll make sure it's on file. So we appreciate it, you coming today.
Any questions?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is Chief Rainey. I asked him to come and give an update on COVID numbers and coronavirus.
Happy Father's Day, happy Mother's Day, everyone.
Thank you. You too.
So I didn't write anything down before I came tonight, but I emailed everybody. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that yesterday. Obviously, our numbers are going up. They've been going up for about two weeks. The big worry is, if we're truly two or three weeks behind Europe, as we have been, their numbers are going back up and getting worse also. ICU beds available is a bit of a concern, meaning that we've always hovered around 60% availability. We're down around 40% now, but that got there pretty quick. That 20% was only over a couple of weeks. So that's one thing that we're concerned about. The other thing is obviously the cases per 100,000. It seems to be the big thing that I've been reading lately is that people are doing a pretty good job of staying away from each other when they don't know each other, but those people that aren't in the same house, who know each other, have no problems congregating together at an event or something. So that worries me a little bit with Halloween coming up and just wanting to remind people that if you don't live under the same roof, still keep that distance, still keep the mask on, and just take those extra steps. If people truly stay away from each other, they should be fine.
We appreciate it. Any questions?
I think what he touched upon was very important, because I've heard the same thing with regards to individuals having, gathering together at activities. And, you know, I think there is a comfort level. If you know somebody, you tend to let your guard down. I've seen that happen where they may not wear their mask, you know, even in the office or outside. I think it's important to continue to do that, continue to wash your hands as frequently as possible, because the bottom line is, we want to make sure that we keep our businesses open. In Southern Illinois, I know they closed the bars and restaurants. That's really concerning for Springfield. If you can imagine, if we have to roll back the restaurants, I've had numerous restaurants say they will never reopen, and these are longtime restaurant individuals, restaurateurs. So that is very concerning. So if you can continue to re-up the messaging for individuals, especially if they're out in general public, or they're visiting, you know, visiting relatives, same goes, mask up, you know, wash your hands, keep your distance. You know, I come from a large family, and we continue to keep the distance. So it just doesn't go away because you're related. You still could have the virus and pass along. And so, it's important for all of us to be, really stay focused, especially when the winter months come along. And I encourage all, everybody to get their flu shot. This is the first time I've ever gotten a flu shot, and so it's important to do that. I don't know how that will mitigate things, but I think it will help. It can't hurt, and I encourage everybody to do that as well. So any other comments on that? Alderman, comment.
Just real quick, Mayor, one thing about the flu shot, we do lose a lot of people to flu every year. And so, the way that helps is that the more people who get the flu shot, we're hopefully reducing the amount of people who also get sick enough to go into the hospital for non-COVID related reasons. So I'm hoping I can even drag my husband in this year. Thank you for going, Mayor.
Then we have Alice Rainey. Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Turner.
No, I was just gonna say, you raised a really good point, because everyone saw where there were, I believe, two regions of the state that had more restrictions put on them. And in that news release, it said that our region was very, very close to having those restrictions. So everybody's, you know, having fits and marching about opening up and going back to school and playing sports, but if we don't do what we need to do in order to maintain where we are, we're never gonna roll back so that, you know, our kids can go back to school and, you know, seniors can have their senior year and individuals can play sports. So we have to stay diligent, and everybody that's, you know, doing all the marching and protesting about opening up, if you don't do what you need to do in order to slow the spread and contain the virus, we're never gonna get there. And God knows, Chuck, me and Chuck wanna see Atlanta for basketball season, don't we?
We do.
So come on, mask up, people.
Mask up.
Alice Rainey signed up to speak.
Okay, smile.
Clock's flying, baby.
I know, but I can talk pretty fast, hon. You know that. I have two complaints. Mayor, I want you to call Judge Holmes and tell him to call me, because I do wanna make a complaint against the zoning and against inspectors, okay? Second off, landlords. Third off is speeding. And I mean, it's getting to the point where Livingston is the freeway. Not a small freeway, but a big freeway, okay? Yesterday, well, it's really today, the lady is getting a roof on her house, and the big truck was here, and there was two cars on the other side. We need to make an ordinance or something that they cannot park on the west side or the east side on the street, because we don't have enough room for a big truck to go through, because our little street's only 25 feet wide, okay? It's for horse and buggy, all right? I think. Now, the other is the landlord. I have holes in my siding from a walnut tree. I think it's like the wind just next to my house, okay? I wanna make a complaint about that, too. I have called Public Works, not him, but Economic Development, to see if I could get siding on my house, okay? Since I had a fire. Now, I have no closets. I have no cabinets, although I'm living in my house and living out of boxes, okay? The person that did my house said that my insurance wouldn't do any more work. What I found out is he went down and got second-hand cabinets for my kitchen, and he put them up six feet, okay? I'm not six feet yet, okay? I haven't grown that much, all right? But I had told him about it, and I told my lawyer about it. So in the meantime, he calls me and tells me, I'll be back in a week. I said, okay. That's been a month. Now, I'm a little bit upset with the inspector, because according to the fire chief, the inspector that came out my house, I was supposed to have new windows in the front and a big window in the back, for in case I was in the bedroom, I could get out, okay? I don't have that. They did not put that in, okay? I do have fire distinguers, I do have alarm systems, and I do have all that. But it seems like Judge Holmes don't wanna call back, because he knows I'm gonna make him work. But I really want some help. For the first time, I'm asking the city council for help, which I usually do my own, okay? But I'm not doing it this time. Okay, Mayor? You got the phone number, Jim?
So we'll pass that along. And then, are you in a TIF district?
Yes.
Because if you are, you can call Economic Development. They have the exterior home improvement program that I believe siding is covered under that.
I asked Doris to help me get it.
Well, you'll have to talk to Val.
I brought you the forms.
Yep.
Well, that's great, Doris. I mean, you know, forms.
I can't fill them out for you. I didn't ask you to fill them out for me.
I just want you to help me, okay? I never filled out forms.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
But actually, we have people in Economic Development that'd be able to help assist with that.
Well, we, okay, I'll have Doris help me.
Abby Powell would be able to help.
Okay, since she knows these people better than me. Uh-huh.
Yeah, no, I gave you the form to complete. You just need to complete that and then get in touch with Val, and they'll walk you through the process.
I tried to get in touch with her. No answer, and nobody called me back, because they tell you to leave your name and address.
Okay, I'll make sure someone gets.
And that's why I called you and told you I wanted you to ask her to call me.
I'll make sure that someone.
Since you're my ward.
I'll make sure someone gets in touch.
And I love you, okay?
I love you too, Alice. I'll make sure someone gets in touch with you. But Mrs. Rainey does raise a really valid complaint about the parking on Livingston, and I don't believe that it's just confined to Livingston, because in the inner-city older neighborhoods, you know, these are the oldest parts of the city, and the roads are very, very narrow. And as a matter of fact, when I talked to TJ, and he measured them, and, you know, there's like maybe six to eight inches difference between the width of Livingston and the width of the roads in the newer subdivisions. So there is a really valid reason why there should not be parking on both sides of the street, because it makes it difficult for people to get down, and when you have parking on both sides. So TJ did put up no parking. I asked him, and he did put up no parking signs on the, hold on, he did put up the no parking signs on the west side of the street. You can't really have no parking on both sides of the street, because not everyone has a driveway. So you have to have some way for people to park. And the reason why he stopped at, I believe he stopped at Manor, and the reason why he stopped at Manor is because the few houses that are down don't have, they wouldn't have any place to park.
Well, that's true. That's, I understand that.
Yeah, so they wouldn't have.
But they got a yard.
But you can't park in your yard.
I have parked in my yard for a good many years.
Well, if someone parks in their yard, someone will call me, and then I'll have to call an inspector to go out and cite them, and then they'll get a ticket, and it'll just be a big mess.
And then you'll give me a slap, on the other hand, and then we won't get nowhere. That's what's wrong with these landlords. These landlords don't do nothing for these people.
Hold on, hold on. Time out.
Take a look at it.
So anyway, there is an issue with, in inner-city older neighborhoods, you know, I'm talking about wards 2, 3, 4, 5, and even some places in 6, that we really need to look at restricting parking on both sides of the street.
I appreciate that.
I have some very narrow streets, too, Doris.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night. Is there a motion for a German?
Walnuts.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or a German, thank you.
Thank you for recognizing this patient.
Get hold of Val, he's a funny.
That's what I'm trying to find out. I tried to take it off quickly, but.
Oh, you didn't do it. I thought you were.
I thought it was a camera or something.
I thought you did.
Just don't eat it, Joe. Don't eat it.
I'm reading my notes, you know.
Is it hand sanitizer? Look at the bottom, it's sanitizer. Somebody probably bought it for hearings or something. It looks like a sanitizer. I thought you brought it, sorry. I'm like, what the?
I thought it was like decorations.